And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Counselor Dilaba.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Reisch.
Here.
Counselor Scamperley. Corn present.
We have two presentations, and we will begin with Augsburg Garden Club presentation of Maple Leaf Awards and Youth Garden Club Flower Show update.
Are we not moving on item three in the agenda?
No.
So we're not moving it at all?
No.
It's on the agenda. Is there a consensus?
Is there a consensus to move that?
I think it's worthy of a discussion. I can talk about it. I mean, I don't...
Well, is there a consensus then?
We can talk about it.
So, two or four. Anyone else? Okay. So, yes, could our first presentation, please?
I am on the money record and I'm currently here for the garden club and group, and I'm making this presentation. Sammy Alford, if you're around, anybody else? I'm going to make this presentation for the part of, I think, both of you know, Maple Leaf Awards, and they were, and they did them, I think, July. I think here they did them. They've been doing this for 30 years. Does everybody familiar with the Maple Leaf Awards? Yeah. So, they weren't able to present them here, so they just wanted to show everybody who adopted the awards or beautified the city and encouraged people to go around to Loveport Lake on Comber Street, in Real on Pine Street, and Lucky on Ford Street, and see what our borough looked like. These were, I'm sure most of you have seen those beautiful places inside all the other beautiful flowers in the city. And they presented these at their August launch. So it's beautiful that people take their time to help us.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So, Youth Garden Club, that's the question. And is Youth Garden Club, are you guys familiar with the Youth Garden Club?
Not mine.
Anybody know where we garden? Yes, yes, it's like, I mean, yeah.
Okay.
We, 27 years.
I did see a sign there yesterday.
Yeah. They're really there, and this is like what our little group. We have at least 20 children who are in our club, and at least 10 of them volunteers. And are you guys familiar with the kids' place garden? Have you walked by there and seen that?
I have seen them.
That's what the children do. And they made bouquets today, the bouquet 101, and they made, the children asked, we told them we were coming to speak and tell you about our club, and they asked if they could make some bouquets for the council, and there they are, made by the children.
Nice.
They've done a beautiful, beautiful job.
Yes.
These children, we want them to love their city. We want them to know they can love it here in their city, just like we do. And we want them to feel a real, a real belonging to their community, and we do that by getting in the dirt and planting, right?
Yes.
And that's our goal for these children. We actually have an adult in the club who was a child, and she has her children in the club. Now, we have adults, too. We have one who has a PhD in horticulture, and he's a health supporter of the club as well financially. We had a flower show. Did anybody go to our flower show at the Remington? Yeah, so the children want a flower show. There are four categories: horticulture, design, creative abstract design, fairy house things, and programs. And so here's just a little example of what they did. We have over 100 people come and look at what the kids did. So I just, I encourage you, if you go by, I'm there, I encourage you, if you have your public car, just walk through, please. Otherwise, any questions? This is just something very, very positive and lovely, having this city.
Very nice. Thank you. Daisy, lead agency requests interim city manager Andrea Smith to do a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, I just wanted to give a brief overview of a topic that is on the agenda a bit later for discussion, which is the proposed demolition by New York State of the Letchworth complex. On August 1st, the city received notification from DASNY under the provisions of SEACR, the request from New York State Office of Mental Health to demolish the Letchworth complex, which includes building numbers 117, 118, 119, 120, 121, 122, 123, 124, 125, and building 210, on the grounds of the psychiatric center campus here in the city of Augsburg. DASNY has made a preliminary determination that the proposed demolition constitutes a type 1 action in accordance with 6 NYCRR 617.4 subsection B9. Furthermore, DASNY proposes to designate itself as lead agency and conduct a coordinated SEACR review among involved agencies, of which the city of Augsburg has been identified. Therefore, the city council has 30 days from this notification on August 1st to either concur with or contest DASNY's presumption of lead agency status. To date, the New York State Historic Preservation Office has been contacted with regard to their review and involvement in the proposed project. Specifically, the Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation recognizes the St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center campus is eligible for the state and national registers of historic places as the only complete state hospital designed by state architect Isaiah G. Perry. "Very few of the buildings have been significantly altered or demolished. It is also significant in the illustration of evolving theories of care of the mentally ill," end quote. In response to the city's inquiry to shipo, Dr. Nancy Herter from the Division of Historic Preservation has just today provided the city with a report dated March 14th, 2023, titled "The Study of Feasible and Prudent Alternatives Regarding the Proposed Demolition of the Letchworth Complex." The report concludes that, quote, "After reviewing all information regarding the proposed undertaking, it is DASNY's position that this study provides OPR/HP with the factual basis and documentation needed to determine that there are no feasible or prudent alternatives to the demolition of the Letchworth complex," end quote. The report further states that it is the opinion of DASNY that the alternatives to the demolition of the subject buildings have been considered and documented. However, these alternatives would be imprudent and infeasible," end quote. Additionally, the documents provided for review reference a December 22 structural conditions assessment. This report has only just been provided to the city at 5:30 this evening, so it hasn't yet been evaluated and considered for these comments. The next steps for council, you'll have until September 1st to issue a formal response to DASNY's lead agency status, either concurring or contesting their position. Along with this reply, the city council should articulate any comments or concerns regarding the proposed demolition, specifically as it relates to the potential environmental impact. The process will formally be concluded by resolution at the next regular city council meeting on August 28th. And council has been provided with Part 1 of the full environmental assessment form, the SEACR distribution list, and the letter from DASNY to aid in consideration of those of this issue. They were all included to the public along with tonight's agenda. I will also provide copies to council, as well as make them available to the public, of the reports that were received earlier today. In addition to the council's consideration of the SEACR action, the city's planning board has received the coastal consistency review documents that are necessary to complete the required review for compatibility with the city's LWRP, and this will be addressed at their regular September meeting. So this is on the agenda for further discussion and comments by city council, and also any comments that we might receive from the public this evening. I really appreciate these flowers, but I am just going to move them so I can see. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. We have one public hearing tonight regarding an ordinance to sell the following city-owned properties to Augsburg Land Bank Corporation, TMN 59.023-1-35, located at 809 Mechanic Street, and TMN 59.023-3-45, located at 801 Caroline Street. I will open this to public hearing now. If anyone attending in person would like to come down, you have five minutes at the Is there anyone attending remotely?
I do not see any hands raised.
And I declare this public hearing closed. And this brings us to personal appearance. At this time, anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium. You have five minutes.
Hello, I'm Margaret Haggerty from the city. Shout out to all the organizers and leaders of the vigil the other night. They recognize the pain our community is experiencing from a number of things, and in a few hours, they put together a very meaningful vigil. So, thanks for doing that. First of all, it's not really my nature to complain, even though you see me up here complaining pretty often. I'm just one who picks my battle, and of course, you know that this is one that I think is worth picking. Sadly, there's despair and distrust in other areas in our city besides the sadness that we experience with the recent losses. Crime is at what must be an all-time high. Vandalism, homicide, bullying, theft, drugs, homelessness, fear, even continued violations of our city charter. At what point will you folks intervene to try to turn this around? What are you doing along those lines? Ignoring calls, disallowing communication, posting good mornings, showing off your riches, media soundbites, none of that's appropriate to address the vandalism, nor the homicide, nor the bullying, nor the theft, nor the drugs, nor the fear, nor wasting precious city resources. Where is our leadership in all this chaos? Whose primary responsibility is optimizing the welfare of our city? Which, that would be you folks. The damage of the past few years won't be easy to fix, but putting out words of encouragement to a community in pain might be a good start. Then following the city charter and seating Mike Tully as the seventh member of council, then letting us know that you're working with the governor and/or attorney general and/or state representatives, or whomever would be the appropriate folks to get us back on track. These things are just for starters. I plan to keep that list going, but in the interest of time and since I want to say something else, I'll save those for future statements. Squeezing in another topic that I feel strongly about, a quote from Vincent R. Robinson says, "Public officials have a broad fiduciary duty to carry out their responsibilities in a manner that is faithful to the public trust that has been reposed in them." I don't think that that could be just defined as, quote, "I decided the fate of the taxpayer," unquote. Yeah, I guess you did. In conclusion, I'm happy to be up here to thank the vacancy committee for doing their duty. The charter is clear on how the names for new councilor are put forth and how the vote is interpreted. The vacancy committee did their job. Mike Tully clearly holds the seat both by default and by majority vote. Congratulations, Mike. Thank you.
Next person.
Hi, Mary Skelly. Returning to Augsburg after being away from my hometown for a year, only to be further saddened with the state of the community, a strong advocate for children, and it's been very difficult for years. Usually, you'll see me over at the county legislative meetings. I wanted to have a seat, District 3, because I wanted to make the county safer again, and I thought by doing so, it would be reaching out to New York State, the New York State Education Department, roundtable talks. I thought that I had some good ideas, but I was up against a lot of retaliation. I've been run off the road. I was escorted out of town, leaving a council meeting. I'm not a violent person. I have a strong message for our children in our community. I want them safe. We have children, all the crimes that are going on in this community that Ms. Haggert mentioned, there's children being exploited and enticed and lured out of their homes in this county. I have been a strong advocate for these children, and I am met with nothing, nothing. There are no prosecutions. The Department of Social Services still has an extremely high rate of removals. I was promised that that was going to change. I feel used. I was asked to campaign. Nothing has changed for our children. It's become more dangerous. I would call on the city, maybe petition for cameras on the hotspots around that park that's become, the incidence of violence are very high there, and other hotspots that we can identify. You know, I want to thank the Augsburg police. Thank you. Provided excellent investigative work that would have put a man in prison for rape, but a judge R.R.'d him. So we're seeing the criminals running the streets of Augsburg. The community has taken on more of a responsibility to make sure that our neighbors are safe, that our loved ones are safe, and we're just at a loss to understand the amount of fentanyl pouring into St. Lawrence County. There are not many ways out of here. It's easy. It's easy. We'd have to reach out to New York State for help. Bail reform is a major problem. It affects the city. I don't know. I've run into a wall again. I don't see the compassion. Cell phones are dangerous. They've been all over the country. Give your child unlimited access on a cellphone, they're lured out. We just had a child lured out. I ran a remote, remotely helped two weeks ago from North Carolina. I told troopers where to go. They didn't go there, and guess where the child was? I already had all the evidence that the person was from Canada. He was from Canada. I'm good at this. I hate that I'm good at it, folks, but I'm good. I can find a missing child. I'm beat down, I'm tired, and I'm sick, and I don't know how much longer I'm going to be able to be in this fight. I will be in it as long as I can, because I want a safer community for our children and our grandchildren. So, what are the solutions? I've mentioned many of them along the way. Many, many. We have many, many struggling families. I am reached out to every single day to be a voice for them, to lend an ear, to pray for them, and nothing's changed, nothing. So, I pray for the city of Augsburg. May we all work together for a safer community. Thank you.
Good evening, Michael Tully, 214 Hamilton Street, Augsburg. I thank council for the opportunity to address you this evening. I know city council continues to be out of compliance with section C10 of the city charter. And such being the case, I believe the vote to fill this vacant seat on council should be resumed. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in attendance? Is there anyone attending remotely?
The first individual is registered as Penny Sharrow, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Appears your line is open.
Good evening. I find it odd that in Robert's Rules of Order, they say you should follow the strict order of agenda, and we just kind of flew right past item number three that Mr. Powers asked about, by knowledge. Are we avoiding, what are we trying to avoid? Another discussion? As they said, the vacancy committee presented candidates. Two are out, one is left. That seems like a no-brainer to me, especially with the budget coming up and the financial background this man has. You would think you would grab at the chance to have him on that council. Instead, you just fly right over it, ignore it like it's not even there. It's just unbelievable. If you're here for the city and for the citizens, we need somebody there who knows the numbers and can work the numbers and help, obviously. I don't know how, with good judgment, you could do this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
The next individual is registered as Greg McNamara, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted. Mr. McNamara, it appears you are self-muted. Not sure how you wish to proceed, Mayor. He's self-muted.
Do you want to move on to the next?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on. And this brings us to correspondence. Kathy, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda, the claims as enumerated in general fund warrant, number 14-2023, an amount of $1,342,859.24. And library warrant, number 14-2023, an amount of $0. And capital fund warrant, number 14-2023, an amount of $40,124.68. And community development fund warrant, number 14-2023, an amount of $0. And community renewal fund warrant, number 14-2023, an amount of $0. As audited, be the same hereby, or ordered paid. I so move.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Reisch.
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This is an ordinance to sell the following city-owned properties to the Augsburg Land Bank Corporation, tax map number 59.023-1-36, located at 809 Mechanic Street, and tax map number 59.023-3-45, located at 801 Caroline Street.
I'll second that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Reisch.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Public Works Director, Shane Brown.
A resolution authorizing the interim city manager to sign an agreement with Sinconny Quimmet to purchase a 2023 model LR50 litter bug vacuum vehicle.
I'll move that.
I'll second it. Do we have a procurement policy? Did we go out, like, something, this amount of money for quotes? Andrea, I guess I'm asking. It's through Sourcewell, so they go out and do the bidding. They get the most from Sourcewell, same way, I believe, was that? Same way that the fire truck is purchased, I believe, possibly our street sweeper last year was purchased. So they go out and do the bidding, like, out of Dodge County does the same thing. They go out and put all the bids out. So is it like state contract? Similar, yes. We're a member of it. And it'd be budget for this? I'm going to pay for it out of CHIPS money. You're going to use CHIPS money? Yep.
That's great. Good equipment. Keep the city clean. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Reisch.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Approved.
Our last item of business will also be read by Director of Planning and Development, Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to execute change order number one to the contract for 30 Main Street Environmental Consulting Services with Paradigm Environmental Services, Inc.
What?
One second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you moved it. Thank you, sir.
So, this is for work that wasn't in the original estimate as far as testing in the tanks and...
Last November, well, last fall, I think it was actually October, there was a resolution approving a contract that we needed to do a Phase 2 environmental site assessment to accompany a grant application. It was a threshold criteria, but it didn't include sampling of the tanks and silos associated with the cheese plant. It included groundwater and soil sampling. And so, there are, we do have a test, or a report from 2021 that was done by Labella, where they did some sampling of tanks, but they were not able to access all of the tanks. So before we can finalize our demolition bid documents, we have to sample the remainder of the tanks, and then we will know what's in them and how they can be disposed of, dismantled and disposed of. So this quote is to do that testing, and then the analytical that will go along with it.
And that'll be part of the bid?
The results will be part of the demolition specifications.
And that's a fair change order?
Yes, and this will be funded under the city's Department of State Environmental Site Assessment Grant, which will cover 90% of the costs associated with the sampling, separate and apart from the restore grant.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Reisch.
Yes.
Approved.
And this brings us to old business. Does anyone have any old business to discuss?
Yes. C10, quite frankly, I see Mr. Goldie in the audience. I have a couple of questions for him, related to the July 24th city council meeting, and...
And from my impression, my understanding, Mr. Goldie, and correct me if I'm wrong, well, I read your opinion and I understand your opinion. I seem to think that our obligations under C-10 were complete that evening as we ended up only with one candidate moving down since, with one candidate to fill the vacancy on the City Council. And with that came the resolution. And then ultimately, under the charter and our, I don't want to call it constitution and bylaws, but our charter, I consider that an aspect, like a constitution and bylaws, same kind of format, where Robert's Rules of Order would come into play as this council obligates and is to operate under Robert's Rules of Order. So I'm kind of confused as to how, we went through the C-10 process, through the many votes, and then ultimately ended up with one candidate. Moved the resolution to appoint the one candidate with the three to two, I'm sorry, three to one votes with two extensions. And I'm curious to know why the resolution would come into play over the aspect of C-10, when in my opinion, shouldn't they all be in one working coalition, so to speak, one operation, so to speak?
It's identified in my memorandum that really it was the fact that you presented this as a resolution that really per, what I had read and been provided, that had there been a vote by the board, not on the resolution, but on the issue of Mr. Thule, that then the rules of C-10 for what would constitute a majority would apply. But you can't get to that issue completely because you don't know how or why it was voted, because they were voting on a resolution. So that's really the situation, I believe, that the council and clerk and everyone else was concerned. So when the call was made, that the resolution did not pass, I believe that that call was correct. So it then begs the question of can the, I mean, C-10, we're certainly able to say the priority of the council is to, really, I think, per the charter, to fill the seventh seat. And with that being said, it's up to the council to decide how they go about filling it under C-10 at this point. But per what happened on July twenty-fourth, I mean, my opinion was stated, so that's, I'm just stating how we got to where we are. And now it's the question to the council, what are you going to do following C-10 to fill the seventh seat?
Sir, when you, excuse me, can I throw in something? When you said with the information you had available and you came up with your opinion, were you aware of the fact in two thousand eleven it happened and it was done by resolution, a vacancy? Again, in March twenty-fifth of two thousand nineteen, a councillor resigned. Again, a sitting councillor that's not here moved the resolution to appoint Mr. Powers, Jennifer Stevenson, acknowledged it and seconded it, and the vote was six to zero. That's a resolution. So if you had those two only times in the last twenty-plus years that this has happened, if you had that information, would you have added that in there as past practice, like the last opinion you gave?
I had that, but neither of those were an issue because it's my understanding that they'd already come to a vote prior to the resolution.
But if the resolution had passed or failed, when it went on, what they did is they selected Mr. Powers's name and put his name in the resolution. So by doing that, that triggered a majority of four. Now, if that happened in the past, why wouldn't it happen today, twice in the past twenty-some years? Why wouldn't we have done it on the twenty-fourth, the same way, and that's the way we did it? But now there's a inconsistency, we want to keep saying, but it's not true. It was done by resolution. You had three people. It came down to picking, selecting a person and placing them on a resolution for action. There's other places in the charter that say, any action or issue shall be done by resolution, which calls for a majority of four people. Any action we ever take is by a majority of four people.
No, that's not true, not per what C-10 says.
That's your opinion.
Well, that's right. You've been asked to give an opinion, so giving an opinion.
But also, the past practice of the previous two years, that the two other vacancies that happened were done by resolution. So why wouldn't we have done it by resolution? We did.
We did.
I'm not suggesting there's any inconsistencies here. I understand what you're saying. So basically, there had to be action done under C-10 prior to any resolution accepting anyone. So C-10, C-10 would secure this position with the votes. The resolution is a formality.
In fact, the resolution isn't required under C-10.
Pardon?
Resolution isn't required under C-10.
It's not required. So under C-10, consensus of council would have put that individual in the seat.
That is correct.
Without a resolution.
That is correct.
Aren't you, I don't understand. How would that have put the person in place if it would have been a three to three vote?
Well, there wasn't a three. But it wasn't, there wasn't a vote on, there wasn't a vote.
Well, aren't you splitting hairs, though? I mean, I mean, we voted on a resolution. A vote's a vote, whether it's a vote for or against. I mean, I don't understand.
See, that's my concern. I'm thinking that it's all lumped into one. It's an operational guide.
The rule goes this way. The charter's clear, that's what's required on a vote for resolution. C-10 references what's to take place if you're voting to fill a vacancy. And you voted twenty times to fill a vacancy, not by way of resolution. So why the vote wasn't taken then?
Because we did it.
We had one man standing.
Person left, so we did the resolutions.
You made the motion.
Excuse me.
We had one man standing. We had one position left to fill, and we had one individual to fill it. It's why I moved the resolution. We had one candidate. The other gentleman respectfully declined, decided in the interest of time to step down. So we had one individual left. The vacancy committee did their job. We have one candidate left. The other two, the first one was voted out in the initial run. We had twenty-three and three. And then Mr. Edie respectfully declined, pulled his name for consideration. We had one individual left. I moved the resolution.
Per the rules for the resolution, it didn't balance.
But the charter says, under C-10, and that's why, this is, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just trying to understand the, you know, why have these C-10 and C-10C to be able to operate with and then ultimately get to, you know, get to a conclusion, you know, a solid conclusion at the end of the day. That's, that's why I moved the resolution. We had one individual left. As far as I'm concerned, C-10 was complete. We had one man left standing. We moved the resolution and went down three, three to, three to two, or three to one with two extensions. I, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, C-10 was, the obligation for C-10 was fulfilled. We had one individual left.
And we voted in eight concurs that there wasn't enough votes?
AR seventeen.
He's saying a resolution. I understand what he's saying, but ultimately, I'm seeing, I'm saying C-10's obligation was fulfilled.
AR seventeen, though.
They want to come up. They have two minutes at the podium for the, for the people in the audience. It wasn't for you.
Sorry. Okay. Well, so, I mean, that's, that's, that's how I understand it.
The other thing.
So is that, is that valid? I mean?
I mean, at this point, I think it's really someone makes a judicial challenge.
The other thing, the other thing I think, and I brought this up before we even began to talk about filling the vacancy, because I pointed out that that section of the charter just makes absolutely no sense. And it obviously didn't take into consideration in the event of a tie. So if you go back and you review the city charter, the last time it was adopted by voters in the city of Augsburg was forty years ago. And that section has been changed three times by previous councils without it being approved by the citizens of Augsburg, which is what you can do. But in my opinion, it was just an effort to manipulate the system to get the people that you wanted, the vacancy committee, and to get the people, the person you want on the council. And the better way to do it is what we're doing now, just like every other community does, and that's to follow state law. And state law has already kicked in. The Board of Elections has reached out to both political parties. The Democrats have nominated someone for the fall election, and that seat will be filled in January, just like every other community in St. Lawrence County. So it's important to, you know, look at the history and realize what happened here. And it's just a flawed section of the charter. And you know, had it been some other way, it worked out twice before, but not this time. So.
With to Counselor Fisher's point earlier, I guess it was unanimous in March two thousand nineteen. I don't recall.
Six to zero.
I don't recall the vote went down.
Six to zero.
Previous one. The one before that. I don't know whether or not that was, you know, ultimately, ultimately, so the resolution passed by a majority.
Five to one. It was, it was actually on the, after Mayor Nelson made a motion. At the time, it was, as the transit, it was the vacancy stuff was just coming in. Mayor Nelson made a motion to appoint Wayne Ashley. And at that, right after that, Counselor Scamparelli made a motion to nominate Jennifer Stevenson. Ultimately, it was five to one with Wayne getting put out, and Dan was the only.
So that were done through resolutions?
Yes.
So, so there was a, there was a resolution put forth by the mayor, amended by Scamparelli, or not amended.
No, no.
But he put in his own resolution.
There was a resolution, there was a name got selected, put in the resolution.
So to his, so to his point, would past practice prevail here? If the resolution went through three, two to two?
No, the resolution.
Or three to one to two?
No, because the rules for.
AR seventeen, six nine comes in.
So we have to, we have to fill our obligations ultimately. So I, we need, as a council, need to fulfill the obligation with C-10 and appoint the seat.
But we should understand the history and that the charter is flawed, that it wasn't.
Unfortunately, we, the only thing we have to work.
It's a, it's a.
Flawed or not.
Well, let's not act like the citizens of Augsburg approved it, you know, forty, hasn't been to the citizens of Augsburg for forty years. So you changed it, Dan changed it, and it's evolved, and it's never been to the voters. So it's a, it's a past council imposing something on this council. And you're almost trying to force, you're trying to compel someone to vote the way you want them to. And I just don't, yeah, that's the way it works. I mean, through a process of elimination. And then you keep voting forever and to eternity. I mean, it's just silliness.
Well, it's also circumstances. We have six councils, we succeed, and we have one resign, so it's just.
So I think we just need to face the fact that there's a vacancy. It's not the end of the world. It's not, the sky isn't falling. There's a vacancy on the city of Augsburg for six months or five months. And it'll get, and it'll get filled in January per state law.
I moved the, I moved to fill the vacancy through the charter, C-10 and AR rec seventeen. Make that, you know, make that resolution now and to fill that vacancy.
No.
You're making a resolution?
Also.
Resolution, motion, same thing.
Also in C-10, C-two, which you guys were using too, vacancies of the office of mayor and council caused other than expiration of terms shall be filled within thirty days. Well, the thirty days has expired. And where's the mechanism in C-10 that lets you go on from there?
Well, it's in the.
Where's the language?
It's in council's memo and along with Andrea's recommendation as well.
Well, that doesn't matter. The only people that can vote are elected officials.
That's all well and good, but I just made, you know, I just made a motion.
Okay. Well, moving on to new business, does anyone have, oh, we're going to begin with Andrea Smith.
So I just wanted to give council an opportunity to discuss any concerns or comments that you have with regard to the proposed demolition of the Letchworth Buildings. You have received a bit of information, and there are some reports that we've received today that I will forward on. But I just want to make sure, if you have questions about the process, that we talk about them. If there are questions you want me to ask of other state agencies or try to get for you, then I do that so that when we do address this again on the twenty-eighth, council can have a comprehensive list of comments, concerns, questions that are included in the resolution.
I really see this, you know, it's a positive thing because it's a terrible thing that they allowed it to deteriorate. It's a terrible thing that State Historic Preservation Office and their historic preservation person at OMH never preserved those buildings, so you have no choice. But I see it as a positive thing, but I also see it as an opportunity for this council to express itself further. I mean, we've been arguing about this. We've been pushing this, the whole issue for three and a half years now, much longer than that with Senator Ritchie and everybody else. But certainly, it's been highlighted over the past three and a half years with all the resolutions we've passed. So I just wrote something and we can, we can talk, talk about it if I can find it. Maybe people agree, maybe they don't. So I think we should take the position, you know, that we support them as the lead agency for seeker, but it's an opportunity for us to make some public comments. And I think the council, you know, if there's a consensus, you know, say that they support this proposed action but request additional actions as follows. OMH should initiate the demolition and cleanup for the collapsed barn building along Route thirty-seven, which is a particular place along a state designated scenic byway. The New York State Office of Historic Preservation should act on the official application submitted by citizens three and a half years ago, requesting that the property be listed on the State and National Register of Historic Places. And as part of this listing, OMH should pay for an immediate inventory and analysis of the remaining properties that can be provided to the State Historic Preservation Office. And so inventory analysis of the remaining properties and buildings to determine which buildings are eligible for listing and to determine which buildings are beyond repair and need to be torn down. So you're proactive rather than reactive. At a minimum, several buildings in the former grounds in St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center should be preserved for their architectural, historical, and cultural significance in this community and the state of New York, including the former administration building, which is now suffering years of deterioration due to neglect. My point here is, is if we don't take some sort of action and tell them what we want, then the same thing's going to be felt. The administration building, the one with the big turrets, beautiful building. And point out that with the passage of New York State Chapter Law one sixty-eight of two thousand sixteen, that was introduced and passed by the state legislature by Senator Ritchie, point out that it's time for New York State Office of General Services to comply with the will of the state legislature. Point out that it's time for New York State Office of General Services to comply with the will of the state legislature that directed the transfer of certain surplus St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center lands to the city of Augsburg for redevelopment. And we, and we request that our state representatives facilitate the above as part of this seeker review or, you know, maybe it's not, maybe this part of the review or maybe it's ongoing. So that would be my suggestions and I would. It'd be nice if there was a consensus so that in our final resolution, um, you know, the, the opinion of the city council will be heard. If you, if you guys agree, if you don't, that's fine.
The public hearing on the twenty-fourth?
There is not a, we didn't call for a public hearing. Uh, the state would be doing, would have requirements to do that. So, um, we obviously are accepting comments. We would incorporate them into our letter, but there's no requirement that we would have a public hearing. If council wants one, you certainly can call for one.
We should share some of this, obviously, with, uh, the state when they, if there's, imagine they will have a public hearing if they haven't already. They may, I, you know, get me, they may have already done it.
I mean, the seeker process itself in, wouldn't require a public hearing. Uh, depends on what they determine. If they determine that they will do a full environmental impact statement, be, you know, if they think there could be a negative declaration. It's my understanding that they don't anticipate that type of a response. So this will could, uh, based on other age, other potentially involved agencies' response go fairly quickly, which is why I would encourage council to consider the comments from Counselor Reisch, consider the documents that we've provided and provide some level of commentary.
I'm okay with that. I, I think this is, it's good. And some of these, I mean, that one building, plus, you know, former Senator Patty Ritchie did a lot of work on it in order to get past that, that law. So they should comply.
To take that property, we would also need financial resources to redevelop that. My only concern is that the state hasn't, uh, hasn't listened to us for a long time. And, uh, and the new administration has, uh, they did keep heat on the prison. They took the razor wire down. They now are going to take down, uh, ten buildings at the psych center. And I just think we need to be, um, cautious and not bite the hand that's, uh, finally reaching out to us and giving us help. Um, I just think it needs to be done, you know, be very, uh, professional and courteous, uh, in the way, uh, we approach it.
Yeah, maybe Andrea could rewrite it, but with the general idea, what's written, so it's, you know, it's, it's polite and everything. That'd be great.
It, it might be good to go to our state representatives and let them do it.
Offer their opinion?
And, and, and maybe move it forward for us.
Yeah, that's what we're asking. Yeah.
Leave no stone unturned. Be told to the Dormitory Authority, the Office of Mental Health.
So is there a consensus? Yours, yours, Mike's fine?
Quite frankly, kind of jacks a memory like that.
As long as it's done.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and this brings us to items for discussion, and we will begin with, uh, City Manager Andrea Smith.
Thank you. So I did include in the ma, agenda materials, um, the recent announcement about the state's round seven announcement of the downtown revitalization initiative and New York Forward. Um, this is round seven. The applications are due September twenty-fourth. Uh, in years past, they have been due right around the same time as the CFA's. So it was kind of nice that they've created two different processes to give municipalities a little bit more time. Uh, so this is just starting, and I wanted to give council and the public an app, um, an opportunity to discuss the pros and cons of the two different funding sources. Um, I just wanted to take a minute to remind everybody that the DRI is the ten million dollar award winner for downtowns. New York Forward is newer. Um, this is only been around, this is the, there have been two awards. And regions have, um, they can either do two, four and a half million awards, or they can do one, four and a half million dollar award. Those are typically for smaller downtowns, smaller communities, um, lower density buildings. Uh, we have not applied for New York Forward, and it might be, we have applied in the past for the DRI. We have not been selected. So I didn't know if council had, uh, a real big appetite for one over the other, or if you want to not do either. They are a big lift. We'll have to have some public meetings and some public outreach to get people's opinion and consensus on the downtown area. Um, but this document provides an overview of both, um, as well as the timelines associated. So I just wanted to give council an opportunity to provide some feedback.
I think, uh, we've written a downtown revitalization initiative grant for three years, I think.
The only time we did not submit was the very first year in two thousand and sixteen.
More than three times and, um, we haven't been successful. We're a smaller community of ninety-eight hundred people or so. Um, and I think we'd be more competitive with the New York Forward grant. Um, that's just my, whatever you think.
Um, I, I'd like to tie, try again for the DRI. Um, Andrea and I, uh, we had a good walkabout with the gentleman last time. That was the first time they've done that. I thought that was progress. Also with the demolition of the cheese plant and availability of all that, uh, raw land back in, down in the Marina District, uh, because that was a big part of our, our project, our past applications.
Would we, would we have a, I'm, I'm fine with that too. Would we have a more competitive application under New York Forward or, uh, under DRI?
I mean, the thing that is interesting about New York Forward, which we haven't applied for in the past, is that it is geared towards, I mean, reading right from here, uh, smaller projects was focused on building renovation, redevelopment, and activation of upper story rather than full new construction, uh, adaptive reuse, two to four-story buildings, which is definitely much more in line with what we have. We certainly don't have high rises in our downtown. Um.
We don't have a lot of two or four-story buildings either.
Well, I guess it depends where your downtown is. So that's, that's part of what we really need. We have always done some iteration. We haven't moved greatly from the downtown core, sort of focused around Ford Street, extending sometimes over the Aspergatchee into what we refer to as the Marina District, sometimes not. You know, arguably, we, I know Counselor, you and I have had discussions about, is this area too big? Is it, you know, should we really be concentrating on something much smaller? So I think the area in which your downtown is defined as is, is very critical. Uh, but then you have to keep in mind, you have to have enough projects to support a ten million dollar award if in fact you were to receive it under the DRI. So having something that's too small, um, or doesn't have enough support from the private sector, isn't going to position us well either.
Both.
I think actually you can apply for both. I will have to confirm that. Um, I don't know that that's a good strategy, but.
You know, I mean, you're sitting down at the table, get an extra set of cards, you might, who knows? It might be the hand you.
Is it, uh, too much lifting for, uh, the staff because we don't have a, a big staff?
I mean, we have always done one DRI application and we have done it in-house. That was also something that's been debated in the past. Should we, should we hire a consultant to help with it? We have not done that in the past.
When's it due?
September twenty-fourth.
In the New York?
Sorry?
New York Forward?
They're both doing the same date.
Same day? If, if the Development Authority of the North Country or County Planning can help you in some way, and you want to bring a resolution to pay them at the next meeting, I'm perfectly fine with that.
I'd support any assistance for you as well. I, I'm, I'm kind of the opinion that, um, you know, all, all of our DRIs have been very well done and very well put together. And I think of ultimately, at the end of the day, through the process of elimination, everybody's getting it around us. I think it's just a matter of time before, you know, and I, I feel pretty good that, I felt, I thought I felt pretty good last year that we'd get it. Uh, you know, but, uh, you know, going forward, I, I just assume go for the ten than, than the other ones. And, and I, the New York Forward's a great program. I can, I read it length in, in our packet, but, uh, what would, what would the, you know, I mean, you've got buildings right along here with, with additional floors, you know, would that be residential? You know, how, how does that work? I mean, do we have the people that would rent things of that nature out, you know, where a DRI with, as the mayor said, you know, they're, we're like, we're leveling property and cleaning property and, you know, makes, in my opinion, it makes it more attractive for our, for our water district, which can tie into downtown eventually.
So you probably should keep it focused from like this block, maybe include that building, you know, the Remington, and then maybe like Hosmer's and Frary's, that little section, but keep it, like before we went all the way to the Newell Building, we went all the way to Diamond. Can't do that. So it probably should be concentrated more. And if you want to come back with a resolution on your recommendation, we'll just, we'll do one or the other or both, whatever. Is whatever you find out between now and the next meeting that you think is most competitive.
Yeah, I can do that. And we can certainly, uh, I mean, maybe we shouldn't have done it. I mean, we can have a public hearing. Um, I think I would recommend setting up some dates for some public outreach immediately, uh, so that we can start to get feedback on what the area will be. Because regardless of whether we do a DRI or a New York Forward, we will have to define the downtown area and the area in which we would be putting forward. So what I will do is, and I'll ask Kathy for help on this as I'm talking on the fly. Um, but what I will do is pull out the maps from our previous DRI applications and, and make sure that they're up on our website. We'll do a newsflash or something of that nature so people can go and look at what we have submitted in the past, just the illustration of the area. Um, that way everybody will be familiar with what we have done in the past. And, um, we can kind of start some conversation from there, how we want to see it revised going forward. And I'll have a follow-up at our next meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Um, does anyone, um, have any items for discussion?
Yeah, it was brought up about the possibility of having to do it tax anticipation, no, because cash flow. Can you just share that? I have a copy of the, the numbers. Can you share it with the rest of the council? I don't think it was ever sent.
Yeah, because you took my one copy.
Oh, want it back? Looked me on a computer.
Yes, just, yeah, we can share that with council and we do. Um, that would be later in the fall. Um, that's not definitive yet, but that is something that we do anticipate needing.
And, um, there's a possibility that, uh, in, in light of this and everything that's happened with the county, um, over tax delinquency and foreclosures and the changes that we won there, that's going to save us quite a bit of money. We may need to change our taxable date, when taxes are due to January, early January, to be consistent with the county. Will that be on the next agenda?
That will be. Uh, I spoke with the county administrator today, um, and we do, staff will be making a recommendation to change our billing structure to align with the town billing structure, uh, that will allow for a more expedited reimbursement of delinquent taxes by the county. Um, and it will just create a, a little more streamlined process with the county for the collection of delinquent taxes. So there will be more detail on that, um, a, a presentation and a, a call for a public hearing to actually start that process on the agenda for the twenty-eighth.
Great, thanks. Budget? Are we getting close to starting to do, um, meetings or whatever? But it's a couple of months ago, they said, we need to get this jump started. And now we're two months down the road and, I mean, and I know everybody's busy, but, you know, even if it's just a slight overview or just somewhere in the direction where staff's looking, where, where, you know, as compared to where we're looking.
Yes, so we did start some internal departmental budget reviews. Um, we were unable to get a lot further into that until the finalizing of the assessment role, which has now been done. I did include in a recent update sort of where we are with the taxable role, the final assessment for the citywide. And, uh, so we will be getting back on track. We also have some of the, and we're still working on health insurance. We, we no longer qualify for our current medical plan. So we are having and we have been having workshops with, um, our insurance provider to look at alternatives since we won't be able to have the same plan. So we will have to work with the unions to accept an alternative health insurance plan for two thousand and twenty-four. That's ongoing. It's been going on for several months. Um, and so those numbers are very preliminary. We don't really know exactly what that package is going to look like. Uh, but we are working on it. So we probably will be having, uh, the next or the initial sort of some budget discussions with council in September.
And, and you really, you don't need anything from us at this time because we gave direction in terms of not exceeding the tax gap.
Correct.
And there's a hiring freeze without any, uh, ability to propose new positions either. So, so that's where we're at right now. Okay.
At this time, if anyone attending person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you'll have two minutes.
Okay, I was writing some notes, so I might be a little bit disjointed, but, um, as far as the charter goes and the, um, and, and calling Mike Thule, the legitimate, um, counselor. Um, if it's something that the charter says, something that's forty years ago, that is a reason that you're thinking today is a re, is something that would mean that he didn't qualify, that doesn't really make, um, very much sense. He can't be punished for that. And also the vacancy committee did do their job as they were, um, tasked to do by the charter. And they vetted and gave the names and put forward them for votes. And Mike won after multiple, multiple, multiple votes by a vote of three to one, which is the majority. Majority of three to one. Two, uh, folks up there decided to abstain. And in abstaining aren't counted, according to the way I understand Robert Swirl's, aren't counted as part of the voting group. So there were four people who voted, three yeses, one no. And that leaves, um, Mr. Thule, fortunately for us. Um, I know he would bring a lot to the table for sure with his knowledge and his passion for the city. Um, but even if, well, even just think of default, there were three people, two people left, leaves one left, which would be the last person on the list of the names that, um, the vacancy committee, um, recommended and put forward as nominations. So to me, as a layperson, it seems, uh, very clear. Thank you.
My name is Molly Sargent. I am just furious with what's going on in this town, this meeting, previous meetings. The bottom line is you are all elected, were elected, to represent all of the people in Augsburg. Not just some, but all. And guess what? It's not happening. It's not happening. Number two, it is so obvious, certain council members will do anything to keep Michael Thule from joining the current. to keep Michael Thule from joining the current council. We all wonder, why is that? What are you afraid of? Notice, I'm noticing the non-contact with the eyes. A little hard to look at me when you, when you hear that question. And the third thing.
Listen.
I didn't think you were supposed to make comments when somebody was talking. And the third thing, inquiring minds want to know why the abstentions when it came to the July 24th vote to appoint Michael Thule. We all want to know why. Why abstain either yes or no? And because you didn't, here we are.
Any more on that?
Thank you. I know it's important that we speak about Mike and everything that took place. But there's something else that I would like to address. And I, I thank you, Mr. Reese, for speaking on the state hospital grounds. This is something that's been, I think, on a lot of people's hearts and minds. And I guess I just want to bring this, if I understood it right, it doesn't, didn't sound to me that we were going to be able to express our opinions if the state steps in here. Maybe I got that wrong, I'm not sure. But anyway, I would like to address it tonight. I, I'm really hopeful when I heard you say that you'd like to see if we could save some of it. And I think it's very important. And I was thinking about all this today, and I was thinking that we don't want to make the same mistake as some of our forefathers made with urban renewal, okay? This, this city is a city that it is important that we make our own decisions as much as we can. I know we're dealing with the state. But I know it's important also that this city has a say as much as we can in what takes place. And I know you want to, you feel that, and, and it's true, we need to take, and we need revenue coming in here, right? And that's important. And I know that's a part of the plan, getting this back in our hands and getting revenues. But I, if we could just think about this a little bit further, there is a way that we can help people and a way that we can also get revenue coming into this city. And I just wanted to bring this to your thoughts tonight. You know, this city could be really, cities are known for what they're known for, right? Like the castle and other things. This city could be a ci, I know, like I have, do I have to quit? A city of restoration to help people. There are people that are hurting, such as our wounded warriors, such as other people. And that state hospital grounds could be used to help restore people's lives. There, that once place was once used to help people. And they had their own businesses down there. There could be a place down there where they, they could have the, they could be rehabilitated, such as wounded warriors and other people that are hurting. They could be rehabilitated. They would have their restored other, of their jobs. They have all gifts and talents that might not be used right now. But if we have a place for them to come, a place that, that we would make to restore people's lives, then it's an opportunity for their families to come here and see them. That will generate motels, that was, will generate restaurants. There's things that we can do and have money coming into this place, but also helping people. So I just wanted to bring that to, you know, to the attention, that there's broken people out there, and we could be a city that could reach out and help people. So I just wanted, I just wanted to express that tonight. There's a whole lot more to this than just tearing down buildings. Those, those bricks down there are, they're valuable. And if this idea of just tearing things down and, and burying it, we really need to think further. We really need to just not move. You know, I appreciate the people in the state, but they don't feel about our place the way we feel about it. We've lived here, we've grown up here. It's a place that can be restored. And this city could be a place that would help people and reach out to people. So I just hope you give that some thought.
Thank you.
Hello. The main reason I'm here tonight is, from the last three meetings, is regarding my side yard at my house, the damage there. It's still there, in the same condition it was over two months ago. I was kind of led to believe until this afternoon by the chief of police that it was going to be handled, and he was going to reach out to the trucking company and get the correct information that, well, I had forgotten the incident report, and that some of the information was wrong regarding, regarding the insurance. And I, I was told it was going to be taken care of. Well, this afternoon, I discovered that, well, I was told I have to civilly sue the trucking company. It's, it's kind of confusing. I don't own, the city owns the property. I have to maintain it. I don't know how I would be able to sue them. I actually called the court here, but the court clerk wasn't at work today, so I can find out in the next couple of days if it's a, if that's even possible for me to be able to do that. But for how much time has gone by, I would have assumed that maybe they were going to just send the DPW or someone over there, if, you know, the city doesn't want to handle it. I've had different officers tell me different things. I even have one actually refer me to Scott Goldie and over the phone. And it was interesting to see him here tonight, which I'm sure he won't come up to the podium and talk about this either, but last summer, I was escorted out of here by Mark Kearns, the chief of police. And he let me take a short video of him out front, but Stephen Jelly and Mike Skelly didn't want me in here to speak at a meeting. So they had me kicked out of here, and I was told I wasn't allowed in this building via a couple of different phone calls from Augsburg Police that week. And I was kept from this building, and I was told from Kathy Jock and Brittany Kelso, when I had called the clerk's office during business hours, that I would receive documentation from Mr. Goldie's office as to why I wasn't allowed in this building during that time. And it never took place. And I called the firm he belongs to in Canton, where other lawyers are involved, enough times, I'm very persistent when it comes to this shit. Enough times to where he got back to me, and it wasn't a good conversation. And at the end of the call, he said, you know what? I don't care anymore. I don't give a shit. He said, go ahead and sue the city of Augsburg, and he hung the phone up on me. So maybe he could get up to the podium tonight and talk about that stuff that went on, too.
Is there anyone else? Is there anyone attending remotely?
The first individual is registered as Penny Sharrow, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears your line is open. Mrs. Sharrow? It appears you are self muted.
Okay. Got it now, right?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, I'm glad to see the city attorney there tonight. I was beginning to wonder if he was a figment of our imagination. Nice to see you. I heard of a lot, when it came down to Mr. Powers' discussion, and Mr. Fisher's discussion, and Mr. Reese's discussion, all in regards to Mike Thule's situation. I agree with Margaret and Molly, who got up and spoke in regards to the Roberts rules. As soon as the two abstentions came in, in my opinion, or since, oh, that's what, it was in everybody's opinion. Then the majority was knocked down from six to four. So that would be, it was three, one that Mike Thule won. He was the last man standing. The seat was empty. I don't get it. I just don't get it. And it sounded like, was that a legal interpretation or an opinion, or is that what legal interpretations are? That we weren't allowed to take that next step and go for the resolution, and then vote on it and win three to one? It just seemed like a lot of opinions were being thrown around out there, and are they legitimate? I mean, are opinions what we have to live on here? It's obvious, a lot of people want Mr. Thule in there, especially at budget time, to help us. We need the help, guys. And it's only a few months, but we need the help. So I would, that's, that's all I got to say, I guess, except that. It was just, everyone's got opinions, and what does that count when it comes to having a man stand there who's willing to help us? I just don't, I don't get it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
The next individual is registered as Wendy Hamilton, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted.
Good evening. I'm just going to add my two cents to the whole C-10 debacle. I think this is a really good example of the old, that's the way we've always handled it. So in my reading and understanding of what Mr. Goldie said, is that C-10, it was not necessary for a resolution, that the vote in C-10 should have held. So rather than go to the unnecessary step of a resolution, that if that vote had been under C-10, Mr. Thule would be in that seat. But because the charter requires four affirmative votes for a resolution, that's why it failed. And to me, this is an example of how we do not question our past practice, we just go along with it. So had there been perhaps Mr. Goldie present at that meeting, he might have said, wait a minute, you do not have to go to resolution, you need to take the final step of voting on Mr. Thule. So I don't know what happened in 2019 if legal, you know, if our city attorney was present at that time, probably not. So because that's the way things were always done, it went to resolution and then became part of our past practice. But I, I just would like to point out that in the future, when you're going to jump to doing something the way you've always done it, that you take a minute, stop, reflect on it, and think, oh, is that still the necessary or the correct way of doing things? Because you, you took an unnecessary step that has now resulted in this deadlock. I'll also point out that you skipped item number three on the agenda. If you weren't going to do it or, or have it, why put it on the agenda? So you're still, you, you have an incomplete agenda tonight because you didn't deal with item three. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I do not see any other hands raised.
We do not have a need for executive session. I will make a motion to adjourn. On favor? Aye. Opposed? Adjourned.